Charleston City Councilman Harry Griffin is not happy with the way the John C Calhoun statue was removed. I speak exclusively with the councilman for this edition of Quinton's Close Ups. And if you haven't already, subscribe to my YouTube channel and like Quinton's Close Ups on Facebook. Charleston City Councilman Harry Griffin, welcome back to Quinton's Close Ups.
Thanks for having me, Quinton. A pleasure to be here once again.
You're very welcome. Let me jump right into it. Obviously, people are talking about the removal of the Calhoun statue. Some people say, hey, it was destroyed. You said this on your Facebook post just a couple of days ago, and I believe you got like 600 plus comments. You said this quote, and I'm breaking it down for time constraints, but you said,
Right, right.
Uh, today, I am ashamed as your city councilman. I'm ashamed because I took a vote and made, and I made a promise that evidently I could not keep. I was disgusted when I walked up on Marion Square and saw this today. Obviously, the, uh, removal of the John C Calhoun statue. Everything that was told to me was a bold-faced lie. What exactly did this mayor tell you?
Well, basically, we took a vote to, uh, move it to a place of learning, uh, where John C Calhoun's, uh, life would be told. I voted yes, uh, because I thought that was a very good compromise. Obviously, a lot of Charlestonians wanted it moved, and a lot of Charlestonians wanted it destroyed. And then a lot of Charlestonians wanted it to remain. Uh, I thought the sensible approach to that would be to put it in a museum or a place of higher learning. Uh, but at this point, we're never going to be able to put it intact the way that it was in a museum because the column, which was 125 years old, and I would say priceless, is completely destroyed. Um, and the, uh, Calhoun himself, uh, the statue of himself remains in a warehouse. And, uh, the base remains at Marion Square. So the column is destroyed. I don't know who authorized that, uh, but I've put it on our agenda to get to the bottom of that.
How can the city of Charleston tell the John C Calhoun statue's history now that has been essentially destroyed in some people's mind?
So for some people, uh, you won't be able to tell the story because, you know, we, we said we would move it as it was. Um, I'm hoping that, uh, you know, between the city and maybe the state and some other players that we could come up with a solution to put it somewhere, um, you know, for, uh, for safe, that's safe and, uh, for historical purposes where it can be used as a teaching tool. I think people deserve to know the good, the bad, and the ugly when it comes to John C Calhoun.
And Mr. Councilman, let me ask you this. Why wasn't this been, in your mind, in other people's mind, brought forth as a referendum in November? As far as the location of this monument?
Because, uh, look, anytime a referendum is brought up, uh, politicians are going to be afraid. Uh, because it's much easier to convince 12, 13 people to vote for something than to put it, put the vote out to the entire city. If you put the vote out to the entire city, I, I have a feeling the vote would have been a lot different than, than it was that night. Especially with everything that we know now.
Right.
Um, and, you know, we voted to move it to a museum. And instead, we have, uh, the statue of the man in a mu, in a warehouse, and we have the column destroyed. So we didn't live up to our end of the bargain, and that's why I'm ashamed. Because I hate voting on something and then seeing it fail. Um, and I hate voting on something and assuring people that it's going to be done a certain way and then seeing it done completely opposite. I feel like that makes me look stupid, and I do not like to look stupid.
Mr. Councilman, let me ask you this. Did anyone on Charleston City Council check with the Charleston Museum before the vote to make certain that the city and the museum were on the same page?
We were told that the museum was, um, taking a look at it, that they, well, when we were first, when the mayor first talked to us, he said it was pretty much a done deal. And then it, you know, right before the vote, he said that they were still very, very interested, but didn't want to have their name attached to the resolution at that moment, that they had to work out some details. Um, and, uh, and then we got a letter right shortly after the vote that stated that they weren't interested. So basically, um, all of that wasn't going to come out until after the vote because that would have probably changed some opinions. Um, and I, I specifically asked the mayor what was going to happen with the statue because I'd gotten word that it would be taken down that night. Um, and he would not answer me in our meeting, and as soon as the meeting ended, he called me and said it was coming down that night.
Now, from the time the Charleston Museum basically said, hey, we don't want our name on this resolution, to the time they sent you all the letter, what was that communication style like between the city and the Charleston Museum?
Well, the city didn't communicate very well at all, um, any of the points because I was told that the city, and specifically the mayor, was going to talk to the museum, talk to the White Light, Washington Light Infantry, talk to the Sumpeter Guards, and talk to the History Commission. And come to find out, he barely spoke to any of them before the vote. Um, you know, one thing I'll say about our mayor is he doesn't like controversy or conflict. He doesn't like to really handle them upfront. Um, he, he tends to, to be more of a passive guy when it comes to that stuff. So I had a feeling he probably wouldn't talk to them anyways because they weren't going to be supportive of this plan. And he doesn't really like to deal with people that are dissenting of his opinion. So I wasn't really surprised. I, I started calling around and asking people, um, whether or not he had actually called them, and a lot of them said no, that he had not.
And was this History Commission supportive of this plan that the mayor proposed to the city council?
The History Commission had no involvement in this decision. I served on the History Commission. Um, I asked him why we didn't send it to the History Commission, and he stated that this issue was, um, so important that it needed to be voted on by council. But now the History Commission, obviously, they're, they are pretty upset that they weren't consulted, especially since that's, that is what we did a couple of years ago. My first meeting ever on city council, we deferred the matter of John C Calhoun to the History Commission. Um, and then obviously, they weren't consulted on this. But this was a political play to, uh, divert the attention away from the terrible, terrible, uh, leadership that we had on the night of May 30th. Um, I saw a four-page article in the Post and Courier today. I'm still shocked by, you know, it said that we might have some answers about what happened by the end of May. You know, I, I've never thought it would take four months to come up with an after-action report of what happened. And that just shows a lack of leadership, uh, from our city.
Is that a lack of transparency?
A very, very, very big lack of transparency. Once again, it goes back to my, um, my statement that the mayor does not handle controversy well. And think about this. We are learning about the riots and how they were handled through the media, not through the city. Not through the city at all, but through the media. The media is taking the time. You're telling me that from the time the media got the tapes of that night, which was only, you know, maybe two months ago, to, to, to this weekend when they released the article, and half the amount of time that it's taken the city, they were able to release a report, uh, or, you know, basically a characterization of the way the night went. That was very substantial, and it was more information. We got more information in one Post and Courier article than we've gotten out of the city for the last 90 days on what happened.
What is the biggest difference between when you heard that audio and when you read the article in the Post and Courier?
Well, when I read the audio, I was immediately perplexed and, and questioning. But let's be honest, who is going to really listen to six and a half hours of audio? Very few people have the time to do that. The news is doing it, and I'm, I'm glad that they are. I did it. I listened to six and a half hours of audio and took notes on it. I was, was hoping to compare my notes to this after-action report, but I'm not going to sit here and wait another month for the city to come up with some reasoning about what happened. I'm not going to wait on Councilmember Shayhead's Public Safety Committee to beat around the bush for another month either. They've been beating around the bush for three months. It's time that we get our citizens involved. They deserve to know the answers. Obviously, I sent a letter off to the Attorney General.
Right.
And I've had some conversations with him as well. We need some oversight in this city. The Attorney General gave me a really good point. He said, look, the best oversight that you can, can get for your police department is your citizens. Um, your citizens and your, your residents, your taxpayers, they are the ones that can hold people accountable. And he's right about that. So I put it on the agenda to have a public hearing so citizens have the opportunity to share their comments publicly on the record. And in that meeting, I would expect city council to be able to ask the chief and the mayor questions about what happened and why it happened. Then we can put all of that into that after-action report that they're taking months and months to answer. Um, it's just a disgrace that it takes this long to, you know, come to some sort of resolution, especially since Charleston hasn't had rioting in over 100 years. This is a big deal, and, uh, people are hurt. And I've got the Small Business Administration calling me and emailing me, trying to get me to help, uh, small businesses take out loans to cover the disasters from that night. How on earth am I going to be able to call a business owner who did absolutely nothing wrong? Who was closed for months due to COVID? And I'm supposed to tell him, hey, uh, you can take out a loan to fix your building up. We've had people spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to repair their buildings. And we also, in that same article, had a state representative incite the crowd and say that, you know, uh, some sort of retaliation or, or some sort of, uh, some sort of, uh, you know, uh, hostility was needed a little bit, and I just don't agree with that at all. Um, you know.
Who are you talking about? You talk about state representative?
State, state representative Marvin Pindarvis was, they had a picture of him with a megaphone, you know, getting the crowd riled up at, you know, 2:00, 2:30, um, to march back towards, um, King Street and Marion Square, whereas they were at White Point Gardens. Um, there's a lot of things that we need answered still. I would love to sit down with Representative Pindarvis, and I plan to, just to find out what his intentions were that day because I was perplexed by that Post and Courier article and how they, they painted a picture as that he was somebody who, who got the crowd even more riled up. Um, and, you know, obviously, there was a lot of police communication on that, uh, listed in that article as well. And when you have officers that are saying, may I make arrests? Um, I need more help down here. And you've got the city of Charleston, who's leading the group, saying, hey, um, y'all are good. Y'all don't need anymore. Y'all got enough down there on the ground already. That, to me, is a, uh, is a big question mark and a red flag. And I don't know if anybody else on council, and I definitely know the mayor, isn't going to ask the hard questions and find out why that happened, but I certainly am willing to do so.
Now, have you been able to get a rough draft of this report so far? And if so, what are the red flags there?
No, no, no reports from the city, nothing. Nothing. The city has produced nothing.
And I know you talked about State Representative Marvin Pindarvis, and just to be fair, he was at the rally down at the Battery when that took place. Let me get back to the Calhoun statue because I want to ask you a couple of,
Yes, and no. Let me just say one thing about, I, I, I have a lot of respect for, for Representative Pindarvis, a ton of respect. I think he's a great guy. He's great for our community. I just don't know if I like the way that he was painted in that article, and I'd like to get clarification on, on that because they almost made it seem like he was inciting the crowd. Uh, and I don't, I don't think of him that way. I think of him as a very peaceful guy who, um, is not going to, you know, resort to violence. So I, I just, I think it's fair for me to, to, uh, to want to try to meet with him about that because the way that he was painted in that article, uh, I don't think was necessarily the case.
And I hope to get Representative Pindarvis on Quinton's Close Ups to get his side of the story. I know you have a meeting at 3 o'clock, so I gotta give you 10 minutes to just give me a couple of yes or no answers. Let me ask you this. Uh, did any of the notable people on this public list who apparently donated money to the Calhoun statue know, knew at the time that they were donating money to remove the Calhoun statue?
I'm sure they did know that, and I'm sure that they played a part in the removal of it. I mean, when you've got the mayor's wife as one of the donors, you know, she just did an interview with the Post and Courier a couple of weeks ago where she basically stated that, you know, she goes home and, and, you know, talks to her husband about what goes on with the city, and they, you know, she's a confidant for him, so I'm sure she knew what was going on.
And let me jump right into, because I was going to ask you later on in the interview, but I can ask you right now. Uh, obviously, Sandra Teklenburg is the wife of the recently re-elected mayor of Charleston, and she said in the Post and Courier We the Women podcast that she sees her role as a volunteer. It's a volunteer position, she says. When did city council learn about this volunteer position?
Well, I watched a little bit of that interview because I, I was told that she had made some comments about me, which I'm not surprised of. There's no love lost there. I don't particularly care for her, and she doesn't particularly care for me. Um, but what I'll say is, look, Sandy stated in that Post and Courier article, or in that interview, that, you know, we ran for the position of mayor. She constantly said that over and over. And, you know, that she said in there that she wanted her own staff. Um, you know, she basically said, I thought she, she made some pretty disparaging comments about Charlotte Riley, who I think was an amazing first lady, but she just basically said that she wanted to have a more hands-on role. And my answer to that would be, hey, all right, Sandy, you've proved your point. You want to have a hands-on role? Then we need to hold you just as responsible for bringing this city into the ground. Uh, you and your husband, the mayor, have done a terrible job these last few months. And our city, look around, it speaks for itself. This city is failing because of you. You want the credit, then you got to take, uh, responsibility as well. This city is failing, and you and your husband are failing us every single day. So you want the credit? You deserve to, uh, take on the responsibility. And tell me, tell me, Sandy, how you're going to make this city a better place? What are you doing daily to make this city a better place? You want to be Mrs. Mayor? You want to be, you know, John's right-hand person who helps him out, make the decisions? Well, why don't you help us get a report on, on what happened that night on May 30th? Why don't you help us figure out what happened with procurement with the John C Calhoun statue? Why don't you tell me how you're going to help fix these businesses that are failing due to the city's lack of leadership? When you can answer those questions, then I'll start treating you as you're the equal to the mayor or, or whatever you'd like to be.
Uh, and, and let me get back over to the Calhoun statue because obviously, as you know, uh, they still talk about the money. Did any, how much additional funding will be paid to a company, potentially taxpayers, taxpayers' dollars to remove the pillar?
The, the pillar is, that, that was in the $138,000, but the base is going to be a substantial amount of money. Way more than $138,000. And if it's done for less, if it's done for less than that, then it will be destroyed as well.
And let me ask you this too. Uh, from my understanding, the base removal is still needed, but it has not been contracted. Is there RFP, uh, ready for that?
There's one that's going out. I don't know if, at this point, if it has, but it will be here shortly. Um, and we'll see, but I'm just telling you right now, I've talked to contractors to deal with this kind of stuff. There's no way we can do the base for $138,000 or less. It's going to be way more.
What will the city settle for?
I don't know. I don't want to, I don't want to mess up the bid process, but I just know that the base is a very, uh, there's going to be a lot of engineering involved, and it's going to have to be done, uh, a certain way in order to save the base. And so if it's done cheap, we're going to end up destroying it like we destroyed the pillar.
Now, let me ask you this. You talked about the bid process, and I know the bid package has not been put together for this pillar or the base. Did council have a say in this?
Council, uh, council, sorry, I think I went black for a second. Am I back?
Yes, sir.
My screen went out for a second, I think. Um, council was, we, we had to approve the bid after the fact. It was considered, considered an emergency procurement bid to capital projects.
Right.
And so the mayor was authorized to approve it without council's consent.
Okay, uh, what?
Well, we, we, we obviously voted on the resolution, but the money was not appropriated until after the fact.
And councilman, what is the plan for the time capsule that's reportedly inside that monument?
I have no idea. I couldn't tell you. I, as far as I know, I have heard no, no, uh, no plans for that.
And where are the contents of this vault?
I, I don't know. All I know is that the statue of John C Calhoun is in Brig, on, in the Brigade, Brigade Street Warehouse. That's all I know.
And what else is in that storage?
I have no idea. Honestly, I, I wrote the, the, the mayor a letter to go and see it, and I hope he will allow me to do so.
Now, let me ask you this too, Mr. Councilman. Will it be a full audit of the city's accounts?
Look, I, I, I don't, I don't even want to talk about audits. The last audit process that I tried to make sure the mayor was spending money right blew up in my face. Um, the, actually, the mayor's office was working against the audit the entire time. And the mayor's PR guy who works for the city was effectively working for his campaign the entire time, coming up with numbers that didn't even make sense, like $50,000. I mean, how could an internal audit of salaried city employees cost $50,000? I don't even want to talk about audits. If the city council wants to do an audit of anything, um, I'm happy to, to weigh in. Uh, but the way that it was handled last time, I, I don't believe internal audits. I'll never vote on another internal audit. If we're going to do an audit of anything, it needs to be an external audit, and we need to hire, um, a, a, an external company that doesn't have to report to the mayor because let's be honest, the, the internal auditor was basically auditing his boss. And that, that's not fair to him, and, um, that, that just really, I learned a lot by that situation. Any audit needs to be external and have a company come in and do it, do the audit and not have to answer to anybody.
And how would that fit as far as the taxpayers' budget? Will the taxpayer be able to pay for this?
I mean, I'm sure the taxpayers would rather pay for an external audit than some of the other BS that they're paying for, such as the, uh, cutting down of the statue and, uh, and all of the other expenses that we're seeing on a daily basis. I can tell you this, though, our city is in very poor financial shape and will be for the near future, especially since we have no plan to reopen businesses, um, and, and, and have commerce again.
And let me get back to the Post and Courier, obviously, the We the Women podcast in which this, uh, apparent first lady commented on the, uh, business card controversy. And she basically says, hey, she calls the business cards controversy, quote, "pretty petty." Is that what you're hearing from taxpayers?
Well, look, I was asked by my constituents, um, to, to come up with that audit. Um, obviously, there were definitely things in there that were improper, such as flying the mayor's friends, uh, to, you know, overseas to Europe and at the taxpayer expense. Um, obviously, Sandy, um, had some perks that she shouldn't have. Um, the mayor, uh, went against city council's wishes on, on some budgetary items and upped the, um, the amount that we gave to charitable organizations that Ms. Teklenburgs is involved with. Um, the mayor was not paying for his city vehicle. Um, and let's be honest, the mayor and his wife took $80,000 from, from an elderly lady and used it to, to, to pay for her business that was not doing well. Um, and, you know, the mayor's wife's father, uh, was the chairman of county council, and he was kicked off by the governor because he was imprisoned for extortion. So unfortunately, the Teklenburgs just don't, do not have a good name when it comes to ethics and, and business acumen. Um, and so, you know, for her to call me petty, it is what it is. Look, there's no love lost there. I think that the job of first lady is an honorary position that, um, is important. Don't get me wrong. I think it's very important. But I do not consider her a city employee, and I do, do not think she should be representing, um, the city in a capacity other than that as the honorary first lady, um, especially because she has interests in, um, certain organizations. She prioritizes things over others. Um, and, you know, the old saying is the apple doesn't fall far from the tree. Her father had some issues with public funds when he was on county council, and her and John took advantage of some lady's money that, that trusted them, and they used it to their advantage. And by the way, no matter what you say, that money, the last portion of it, wasn't paid back until they were caught. So chances are, if they weren't caught, they may have never paid it back. Who knows? Um, I just think that we should be very careful when it comes to the Teklenburgs uh, because, uh, I, I'm, I'm very questionable about some of their spending habits and how they go about things. And so for me, I saw the business cards, I saw the fact that the car was getting taken home and a bunch of other things, and I said, you know what? I think it's time we look at this and see if there may be something bigger, especially since the evidence on Ms. Wineglass had come to light not far before that. Um, so with all, all of those things included, I thought it was worth our time to look at that.
And let me get to her side of the story because she basically says when it comes to the business cards, it's not, it's quote, it's not uncommon to do this in America because she felt like it was a partnership. She called it a partnership. How do you see this partnership?
Well, I think I made my point clear. A partnership means that we should be pointing the finger at her and holding her accountable just as we help hold him. There's people all over this low country and, and this city that are calling for his resignation and saying that he's done a pretty poor job, um, in this last year. I guess we need to hold her accountable too because if it is a partnership, we should hold her just as accountable as we hold him.
And she said this quote, "When the attacks come like that," meaning what happened with the audit and the business card controversy, "it just makes me," that's what she said, "wants to dig harder and do a better job than four years ago or five years ago." Has she done a good job over the past four years?
That's not for me to say, but I can tell you this, I've never voted for them, and I don't want to.
And she also said in that particular podcast with the Post and Courier reporter, she says this quote, "She felt like she was a threat to most of you all." Were you a threat or were you, again, looking out for the taxpayers?
No, she, she is the threat because she has no business acumen, and neither does he. They are a threat to our community right now because three more years of them as the mayor and first lady, we'll give her the credit. She wants to be considered an equal to John, that's fine. Three more years of them, and this city will be effectively run into the ground. I'm just telling you, I have served on city council, I've seen it from the inside. Three more years of them, our business community will be shot, and King Street will still be in disrepair as it is today.
Mr. Councilman, let me ask you this too. Was the removal of the statue considered a contract demolition in your mind?
That's exactly how it, how it turned out to be, but that's not how it was supposed to be.
Now, does the city have any plans to use the pedestal to put a different monument on?
I have no idea, Quinton. There hasn't been any discussion of that.
Will you request the name of the private donor, do a FOIA request?
I don't have to request it because I've already been sent the list of who they were.
Okay.
It's been, it's been posted publicly, so.
Yes, sir. Publicly, some of those names have been, um, you know, for publishing a lot of notable people in town. And let me ask you this too, uh, I hate to ask this question, but let me ask this as well. How ready are the stakeholders, uh, as far as sitting down and actually talking about systematic changes after removal of this statue?
Look, I am, I am very happy and blessed to sit down with anybody, uh, and of any color, any race, any gender, any background. Um, you know, through my business, uh, we, we, um, are a second chance company and spend a lot of our time, uh, working to, uh, help give people a second chance. I think right now our city needs a second chance. Uh, we've been beaten up pretty bad these last few months. Um, there's, we're very divided right now. We have to find a way to come together again. Uh, we have to find a way to work together. Uh, and we've got to find a way for business to thrive and, uh, for, for social and economic, uh, changes, um, throughout Charleston for all of our people.
And she also said lastly in, in that podcast that she felt like they were called to provide healing to this particular city. Where should they start?
We should start right downtown on King Street. We should work with all of our people on King Street, all of our vendors, uh, minority vendors, everybody involved. Uh, that would be, um, a huge thing for our city to start on King Street. Everybody involved. Uh that would be um a huge thing for our city to start on King Street.
And I know obviously uh when when the mayor was re-elected to office, he said that the that obviously the next four years, he would be working with everyone, including his opponents in the. The prime mayoral race to make Charleston a better place. But how could he make Charleston a better place by erasing a part of the history?
I I don't know. You'll have to ask him that question. I hope he'll sit down with you and do a, do an interview.
Yeah, and he's welcome to do an interview with me as well. Uh Councilman Harry Griffin, thank you so much for your time and again, welcome back to Quentin's Close Ups and I know you got to go to a meeting, so thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Keep doing great things, Quentin. I appreciate you.
You're welcome.